Okay, folks, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Can we stand and say the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Johnson.
Mrs. Blackman?
Here.
Mr. Detwiler?
Here.
Mr. McCartney?
President?
Mr. Botto?
Here.
Mrs. Walker?
Here.
Next, can I get a moment for silent prayer and meditation, please? Thank you. Next, can I get a motion to approve the July 10, 2023 agenda for the Jonathan Alder Local School Board Meeting, please?
So moved.
One second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Detwiler?
Yes.
Mr. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Botto?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Blackman?
Yes.
Next, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the June 26, 2023 regular board meeting, please?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Johnson?
Mr. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Botto?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Blackman?
Yes.
Mr. Detwiler?
Yes.
Okay, next, I'd like to invite Mark Bobo up from OSBA.
President McCartney, board members, thank you for this opportunity to be here with you tonight. My name is Mark Bobo, serving with the Ohio School Board Association. It's always a privilege to be able to come and meet with our board members as you all know. Great work for this community. Tonight, I have the privilege of honoring Mr. Steve Botto for his over 20 years of board leadership and service to this community. I often say in my travels, if any person can make it through the first year of board leadership, that's wonderful. For 20 years, it's phenomenal. And it goes without saying, anyone that is dedicated and loving to their community, this is a, it's both an honor, but it's also a sacrifice that one makes for their community. And so tonight, I'm honored to honor Mr. Steve Botto. Thank you for your continued leadership and excellence here in the Jonathan Alder community. And from your State Board Association, thank you for your commitment and love for this community. Let's give Mr. Botto a round of applause.
Can I get a picture? All right, three, two, one. Perfect.
Thank you. Well, thank you, I appreciate it tremendously. Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, next, we're going to move on to public participation. Mr. Dave Lawrence.
Well, thanks for letting me speak. My name is Dave Lawrence, I'm the, one of the Union County Commissioners. I've only been in this job for about seven months. But what I have noticed is that the positive impact that us as elected officials have on the, on the community when we work together. And one of the, one of the examples, I think, is the relationship we have with Marysville. It's, it's a really good relationship, and we see booming growth down there. And that's, I guess, that's one of the benefits to working together. Unfortunately, negotiations between the county and Jerome Township on how the TIF revenue is spent has broken down, putting the school districts in a difficult position of choosing one entity over the other. While this is not an enviable, enviable position, I believe that the board has much more power than you may think. We're experiencing significant growth in the region, which stresses the services that we all provide, from educating students to law enforcement, to handling the inevitable increase in traffic on our road system. We're all concerned on how will we keep up with this growth. Now, the TIF proposals presented to this board over the last year leverage the growth by diverting those tax funds. They all fund the much-needed public infrastructure in the region. The vast majority of this infrastructure is statutorily the county's responsibility to maintain and improve. Without this revenue, we'd be woefully ill-prepared to handle the challenges that be, that will come before us. I just urge you to defer decision with this TIF proposal that we fear will negatively impact the region for decades to come, and encourage both sides to sit down and work through their differences. Together, we can provide the necessary support to support the districts while maintaining and expanding upon our infrastructure network to go to the economic base in a responsible way. I just thank you for your time and your consideration. Thanks.
Next, I'd like to invite Mr. Jeff Stausch to the podium. Jeff? S.T.A.U.C.H.?
No, I think Jeff's on his way.
Okay.
I know I'm next, so I'd be more than happy to come up and fill some time.
Sure, we'll, we'll move, we'll miss, we'll move Jeff to the end.
He's here.
He's there.
Oh, he's here.
Jeff, welcome!
Perfect timing, Jeff.
I had a escort here, so.
You're up.
You're up. All right, thanks for having me.
Are you prepared, or would you like us to move you to the end?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
There you go, so. Sorry about the delay. So, I'm Jeff Stausch, as you might have imagined. Thirty-five years as working in the county engineer's office, fourteen at as county engineer. So, been around a bit, raised two Fairbanks kids, so, one played soccer, so try not to hold that against me because I was in the opposing stands perhaps, once or twice as a fired-up parent, but good memories. Here tonight is, you know, we are, we are the, the office where the source of the TIF funding is, is targeted for. As I often say, growth doesn't pay for itself. We are a bit of a unique county in that we're growing, you know, the top three fastest-growing counties in the state for a number of years now. You know, we're neat because we're not Delaware County, Warren County, the city of Dublin. We just don't have the dollars that they do with the growth, but we have those same growth challenges. And projects are just becoming more and more expensive all the time. This year, we have about $15 million worth of capital improvement projects. Doesn't count what we're spending on maintenance or our own crews. These are just contract projects that we're getting put into place this year, this season. About $10 million are slated for projects just within the Alder School District. We have one on the street right now. Some other projects will take place in 2024 and 2025. But those are big numbers for historical comparisons. We just can't sustain that as a small office. We're, we are a small shop, medium-sized county, revenue's growing a little bit, but not nearly enough to cover those level of improvements. We've put together this $15 million program this year with grants that take years to come due with some sales tax that we get from the commissioners on occasion. There's, but there's just not that much there. And typically, our user funds are what funds us, which would be license fees and gas tax. The traffic impact fees that we collect are usually banked for a period of time, then we use those when we collect enough to be able to build an intersection or widen a road. So, we try to hold the developers accountable for the traffic impacts. That doesn't always make us popular, but that's, it's a philosophy we've had the last 10 or 12 years. So, again, we just cannot sustain that year, year over year. That's why I was so excited to nearly have an agreement with Jerome Township done in March. We literally were with, with an adjusted paragraph or two from having that done, where we keep 75% of the county funds, 25% goes to the township to use on their projects. And they truly have increasing needs too with this development. But the, the big-ticket projects, the $3 million intersections, the, the, you know, the road widening is going to cost tens of millions over the years. Those are county engineer responsibilities, not Jerome Township responsibilities. But then inexplicably, that fell apart. I have a couple of, of, I guess, reasons why I think maybe that happened, but bottom line, we're all serving, we're all serving the same residents. I take that to heart. This is the work that I do for a living, my staff does for a living. It's what we're paid to do, and these high expenditure jobs need to be coming out of our office. It doesn't mean we can't have developer input. We do public-private partnerships all the time. You could ask Nationwide Realty. The township, you know, we have 14 townships. Every township has input. We take that into account. But the ones driving the bus that do the work, that by the right of way, that, you know, all those things need to flow through our office. We need to select, plan, and build those jobs. It really doesn't need to be the developer and the township building those jobs as opposed to us. I, frankly, I've seen their priority list that they've listed. And those are not all priority projects. Some of them are, some of the ones we're building and actually bidding here this spring, this summer. But some of those priority projects on their list are driven by what developers want to do for their interests. So I'm just, I guess, wrap up. A 30-year TIF controlled by a township is just not a good business plan for the public. It probably is for the developer, but it isn't for the people that we serve. And I really hope to get back to the table to do the right thing. I've talked to one of the trustees and their township administrator, and they agree that maybe that's a good step to try to get back to where we were in March. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Narducci. And folks, I let Jeff go because, but let's try to, try to limit our comments to about three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Bill Narducci. I serve as county administrator for Union County. I've not been in this role for an extended period of time, about a year or so. Prior to that, I was in the engineer's office with Jeff as my boss for a period of about 12, 12 and a half years. So, when he talks about infrastructure and the needs from the county, both current and projecting into the future, that's something that, you know, I hold dear to my heart. And I think, you know, anyone that drives the county road network and township road network knows that things are not settling down. We're seeing a lot of growth pressure. You understand that as the responsibility, or as the entity responsible for educating the children in the district. You know, we see that from the services that we provide, the infrastructure that we provide. Commissioner Lawrence mentioned law enforcement. And quite frankly, we were in a position in March with the township where we thought, thought we were at the goal line. We had worked for about a year and a half, two years, on hammering out the details, and I think we were all very excited. Six of six elected officials had approved the changes verbally. And inexplicably, like Jeff said, they, they fell apart. And I think both entities have perspectives on why that happened. But the communication since then has been cut off completely between the county and the township, and this is not blaming the township or the county. Both of us need to get together at the table, because as I mentioned to a board member of OTAW, we all succeed when we cooperate. The division is only going to create uncertainty in the district, in the area, and that just lends itself for bad actors to come in and, you know, influence the parties, you know, based on those differences. So, what can be done? You know, I think a deference by the board tonight on this TIF resolution and urging the county and the township to put aside the differences, get back together, go back to the March 15 agreement. If there are details that we need to work out within that agreement that have changed since March, let's, let's have that discussion out. Because again, you know, I think that without that, there's just going to be a lot of uncertainty in the area that will create challenges for all of us moving forward. Thank you.
Mr. Narducci, I have a question for you.
Sure.
So, if we were to table this discussion and ask you guys to go back and have a conversation, everything that I've heard from the county is we are not willing to move from March 15. So, I'm, I'm not unclear on what 60 more days of this board having to read email after email and phone call after phone call. What, what's the county, is, is the county willing to actually have a conversation and move from March 15?
Yeah, absolutely. And we, we actually had a conversation in early May with the township's legal staff, with myself, with Commissioner Burke, and our legal staff on some terms that we thought caused concern to the township. We moved on those. We, we made additional concessions from that March 15 agreement. They were rejected in whole, and probably a half dozen or so more terms were added, some of which we had never discussed at all. So at that point, the county, it became clear to the county that maybe an agreement is not what was the intended goal by the township. But we can have the discussion on what the concerns are by the township in terms of building infrastructure, because right now, nothing's, nothing's happening. There's nothing being built. So, until we get together, we fear that it's only going to cause more delays, again, more uncertainty. So, I, I would invite our commissioners and, and the township officials, and Brandon and myself, as appointed officials, to get together and try to figure out where those differences are, where that miscommunication is, so we can come to an agreement. But we're absolutely willing to have that discussion. We've always had an open door.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Fred Yoder.
Good evening. My name is Fred Yoder. I'm a landowner over on Butler Avenue, lifelong resident of Jerome Township and, and Union County. I've had a lot of experience in collaborating and also getting things done. I was the past president of National Corn growers, and I was involved in the last six farm bills. You talk about making sausage. I mean, you guys haven't seen anything yet. This is nothing, when you've got such diverse groups that come together and, and, but you know what? We got it done. And there's no reason why we can't do it here either. But the biggest thing is that bothers me is the transparency. The reason you don't hear a lot in the, in the community, nobody knows what's going on here, except what's written in the, the Marysville Tribune. And, you know, that's generally got a slant one way or the other, so there's two sides to every story, but it also takes a willingness to work together. You know, the first glance, it, it appears that there, there might be some favoritism on one side, or, or both sides. But the main thing is, you know, we've got to get rid of this public discussion of, of who's responsible for the infrastructure and who's responsible for other, who's doing what. And, but one of the things that really bothers me is this idea of, of a, of a home rule where you actually have a divorce between your, your county and your township. I'm a member, I'm a citizen of Jerome Township, I'm also a citizen of Union County. I don't want to choose, I want to support both. They have to work together. And you all have a chance to, to make some demands too. You guys are caught in the middle. You're caught in the middle of a very tough thing here. And, and unfortunately, it's all about following the money. Where can you get the most money? And, but when you do that, you also, when you go down that, that hole, that, that rabbit hole, then all of a sudden, the next time you have something going on, it, it, it makes a difference with the direction you're going to go. So, I will guarantee you, if you would sign and you would, you would agree to the, the township TIF, that the county's going to come back in some way, shape, or form, you know, to counteract that. And we're going to go up back and forth, back and forth. Years ago, when, when Dave Hopson was my county, excuse me, my, my national congressman, every time I saw him in DC, he'd always say, "What's happening in Jerome Township?" We were laughing stock. We've, we've, for years, this is not a, a first-time thing. For years, we've not had a good relationship with the county. It's time we do that. And I thought we were going to have one, but, and we got very, this close to, to getting the seat done. I suggest we go back to that. But anyway, my, my, my point is to you, Jonathan Alder School Board can be part of the solution, or they can sit back and just, let's just, where can we get the most money? But the things you do today is going to be for the next 30 years. Your children and your grandchildren will be subject to whatever you decide today. This might be the most important decision that your board ever makes for long-term thoughts and what's good for this, for the, for the school district. Whereas bursting at the seams with growth, so make sure you do it right. But you're can't, we cannot go down this road unless we have a good working relationship between the county and the township. We're both, and we have to work together. The county does some things very well, the township does some things very well. They have to be brought together and work together. And so I would just urge you to, before you sign any agreement, just make, make it clear that you want to see a working relationship between the county and the, and the township commence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yoder. Ms. Elizabeth McDowell.
Good evening. I'm Elizabeth McDowell, and I'm resident of Jerome Township. I saw tonight that you'll be voting on a TIF for Jerome Township, and I was concerned about whether or not this is appropriate for the district at this time. I attended the last board meeting when Weslyn Davis and her colleagues gave a presentation on the importance of this TIF. And I'm not an accountant. I have a layperson's understanding of a TIF and, and how this all works. And last week, there was an article in the Marysville Tribune, and I know Fred Yoder just mentioned that it might be slanted. But I was concerned because there was a TIF that was given in 2017 to a developer for 300 apartment units, not in Jonathan Alder. But this developer is now coming back and wanting future TIF revenue, close to $13 million, for things like attorney fees, land acquisition that should be for roadway, and lots of other things. So, my concern is that we don't want to be surprised by something down the line with something, it's 30 years, right? That's a really long time. So, I would, would ask this board to table their vote for tonight. And, and maybe some more negotiation. Thanks, bye.
Thank you, Ms. McDowell. Next, Ms. Weslyn Davis.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Weslyn Davis, Jerome Township trustee. I'd like to start by saying that Jerome Township's current 1075 directs 75% of all new property tax dollars that would otherwise go to Jonathan Alder School District to Jerome Township roadway improvements. The Jerome Township administration is seeking to make the Jonathan Alder, Alder School District whole by requesting your approval to convert our current 1075 TIF to a 30-year, 100% non-school TIF. The Taft Law Firm was engaged some years ago to engage and, was engaged a few years ago to conduct a financial projection and analysis of the Innovation District revenue, including currently developed parcels. Taft Law Firm is a highly respected firm that is used all over the state of Ohio to develop financial projections. With a 30-year non-school tip in place now, new Jerome Township commercial, commercial development will spur 10, development, economic development, generating tens of millions of dollars in new school tax revenue over, over time, especially over the next 10 years. It's projected to produce over 50 million. And this brand-new revenue comes with no increase in school tax rates with a minimum or very little to no new student roll, new, new student enrollment created. Additionally, the TIF applies only to new property tax revenues and not existing county property tax revenues. This helps create safe roadways for our children and families, and no school revenue will be used for the infrastructure projects as the school district will be made whole as if there is no TIF in place at all. Jerome Township TIF dollars will make long-overdue safety improvements to Jerome Township roads, including county roads. Roadway improvements will make Jerome Township's road, Jerome Township roads safer for our children while they travel on school buses and for persons using Jerome Township roads. Critical roadway improvements Jerome Township would like to address are as follows, and these have not been determined by developers at all. U.S. State Route 42 and Industrial Parkway, Mitchell-Jewett and Industrial Parkway, Warner Road and Industrial Parkway, and Kyle, Warner Road and Kyle Road. And we'd like to see the construction of Hootsfield Road, which opens up the development for the Innovation District that is located within Jonathan Alder that will produce much of the TIF revenue that you would see generate over the next 10, moving into 30 years. Board approval means we better protect and educate our children. Construction of new roadway safety improvements generates tens of millions of dollars in new school tax revenues, costs Jonathan Alder School District no money at all, generates significant increases in school revenue with no tax, with no increase in tax rates, little to no impact on student enrollment, and is a win-win for everyone, including the school district and its students, Union County, Jerome Township, and all stakeholders. This 30-year TIF is the first in the county. They happen all over the state of Ohio, where the township is in charge of a 30-year TIF and works cooperatively with, with the school district. You find this in Delaware County, you find this in Westchester Township is a great example. Orange Township is one. Butler County, this happens all the time. But this is the first in the county, okay? So, with this, there can be an element of fear that comes with that, because it's not done, been done here before. Jerome Township is at the forefront of all the, the very intense growth that we're seeing. There could be a misplaced sense of loss of control. And I can understand that with the county, of course. However, this tool is the resource and the tool that will solve the problems in our high-growth area and bring the township and, and county together ultimately, as we will be able to sit together at the table and work on these projects, because at the end of the day, it's about fixing the problems, and the problems are the priority lists that we can mutually work on together. But I thank you for your time, and ultimately, I would request the approval and your thoughtful consideration on this. Thank you.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
So you mentioned roads, 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 roads. Does the, does the township have the authority to construct those road improvements without the county's cooperation or consent?
Oh, no. See, we ultimately need to work very closely and well together with the engineer's office in order to make this happen. And are very willing to work collaboratively on all of the projects, unless I, I'm very well aware of, I've been to the engineer meeting, two years in a row with, that our county engineer, Jeff Stausch, puts on at the beginning of the year. And our priority projects are not, you know, mismatched and based on what I know in the presentations that have been given to the public.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, if we could move on to, thank you all for coming and speaking this evening. I appreciate your time and your willingness to come and speak for us tonight. Next, can I get a motion to approve the June 20, 23 financial reports as presented?
So moved.
One second.
Any discussion?
Just one thing to add. The state budget was finalized, so there is going to be some growth for next year from the House version of 289,000. So, that's some good news. It is going to be reduced the second year by 233, but it is at least a positive from the Senate version, which was going to hold us pretty flat. So, there's going to be some improvement for our forecast from there, so.
Great. Roll call, please.
Wait, Mark, I have another discussion. Aaron, thank you so much for supporting the district throughout these last 10 years.
Ten years.
Ten years, and enjoy your time at Fairbanks.
Well, thank you, very much.
Tonight will be Mr. Johnson's last meeting.
Aaron, I too just want to thank you for your great work here at the district. I know 10 years ago, you walked into kind of a hornet's nest here, and the progress we have made under your leadership has been phenomenal. So, I really thank you for your leadership, for your vision, and for all your great work in putting our financials together in such a robust and healthy way. So, thank you.
Thank you.
We will miss your steady trustworthiness, Mr. Yoder.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Roll call.
Mr. Botto?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Blackman?
Yes.
Mr. Detwiler?
Yes.
Mr. McCartney?
Yes. Next, 7.01, Policy Committee Update. Can Noah?
Yeah, I'll take this one, sure.
We received some updates through Niola regarding three things. The first is their federal laws expanded the protection for nursing mothers and pregnant employees in the workforce. So we are updating our policies and administrative guidelines to meet those federal laws. Also, notice of meetings was suggested there was an amendment to include notice of board committee, commission meetings such as the Record Commission also be published with the same requirements that our regular meetings are published with the same notice requirements. And then finally, there's a new policy regarding the procurement and use of epinephrine, I knew I was going to miss that, epinephrine auto-inductors in emergency situations. So we'll be adapting a policy that aligns with federal laws and guidelines.
It's been not a policy about that, it's completely new, it's not just a revision.
We did not have a policy for emergency situations. We just had a, a general policy regarding the, the EpiPens.
Any other discussion? Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Next, Superintendent's report.
Thank you. I also want to take a second to thank Aaron, I was first year superintendent. I walked in and had my hands full with a lot of learning and building the team and I wanted to tell you how much I appreciate you for being there for me fifty percent of the time. A hundred percent of the time, I want to thank you. I really appreciate your support and encouragement this year. I also wanted to comment and thank those public participants. It's been a, a learning experience for me to understanding, you know, how the TIF impacts our district long-term. So thank you for those that are here today. On a personal note, I wish, I wished and I, and I hoped that these two tax entities could return to the table and, you know, work through the challenges and the conflicts and come back to the district with an agreement that is a positive impact for, for everyone, that's personal preference. But I feel that we, we've been there already and we've tried that and there was lots of positioning for power through this. So as a superintendent, my recommendation is to, well, as a superintendent, you know, I'm hired to make decisions and make recommendations to the school board, what I think is in the best interest of our students and how we operate and all doing that within our means, within our financial means. So if this resolution is a, an agreement that supports our families, our growth, our expansion of buildings and new buildings, as we're going back to our voters and asking for a income renewal, a bond issue, I, I think this proposal is in the best interest at this time because it's the facts that we know. So that is just my recommendation to the school board. That takes me to a lighter part of this meeting, I wanted to introduce our next Plain City Elementary principal. Mrs. Kathy Savage is with us this evening, she went through a very extensive interview process. As superintendent, I had the option to select Mrs. Savage as a next principal, but I thought it's more powerful for her to go through the process. There were fourteen teachers involved in this committee, four administrators. And Kathy Savage rose, rose to the top, separated herself from the rest of the candidates. Just being with us at Jonathan Alder for one year has done a great job establishing those relationships with the staff, the teachers, the students and the families. So Mrs. Savage is student-centered, she leads her staff by building trusting relationships through continuous communication and collaboration. Went through a heck of an interview process and I just am proud to recognize you and announce you as pending board approval. The next Plain City Elementary Principal.
So, I don't know, last year at this time, actually a little bit later, they were supporting my transition to the district and it was quite hectic, but I, I told everyone at that time that I was, you know, my promise was to lead with gratitude and grace and, and a lot of grit. And I did that and I will continue to do that as I move into this year. I am just, it's, it's genuinely an honor to accept the position as the principal at Plain City. I'm super excited, I have a lot, a lot of great ideas. My main, you know, priority as a leader every single year is to make sure that I'm cultivating an environment that makes students and staff both feel safe and included and, you know, providing engaging learning opportunities whether it's for students or professional development for staff. And so those, those are the things that I focus on as a leader and I feel like, you know, as long as students are getting to school and they're happy and loving it and teachers feel valued and appreciated, we're all on a, on our way to doing some great things. So thank you for supporting me and believing in me and continuing to, to allow me to be a part of this district because I love it. Love everything about it, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
I also wanted to introduce our assistant principal, he's not with us this evening, he's on a family vacation. But Mr. Adam Hayman also went through the same interview process. It was actually a really unique scenario and experience for everyone because as Kathy Savage proved to be the best leader in this role, the committee could look at the other candidates and determine, even though there were outstanding candidates across the board, they could find out who's the best personality and leadership style to mesh with Mrs. Savage. So as those second round candidates rose to the top, and we decided that Mrs. Savage was our number one leader, she was able to sit in on those last couple to, to have a say in who's the best match for her assistant. Adam is coming to us from Dublin, but he is a current resident of Plain City, he has a, a family in a nearby neighborhood and we're just really excited to welcome him to the team. That's my report.
Thank you. Okay, so we are going to move on to eight point zero-four. Can I get a motion to approve the employment and personnel consent items as presented?
So moved. I'll start here.
Discussion? Roll call please.
Mrs. Blackson?
Yes.
Mrs. DeWiler?
Yes.
Mr. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Voto?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Blackson?
Yes.
Okay, next, the second reading, can I get a motion to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four Jonathan Alder High School, Jonathan Alder Junior High, Kenan Middle School, Monroe and Plain City Elementary Student Handbook as presented, please.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call please.
Mrs. DeWiler?
Yes.
Mr. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Voto?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Blackson?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to approve the agreement and letter under, letter of understanding between the superintendent of Jonathan Alder Local Schools and the Jonathan Alder Education Association for job sharing?
So moved.
So.
Discussion?
This is kind of cool.
If it's done right.
If it's done right, yes.
If it's done right and there were lots of hours spent with JAEA. Our new assistant superintendent, Becky Crawl, really led this initiative, brought the teachers in to really see how this looks so that it doesn't work backwards, but it positively impacts our, all of their students and their families with two people instead of one. We're, we're encouraged, we're excited to see how it works out.
Is it the high school?
No, it is a Kenan and Plain City Elementary Intervention Specialist, they're going to be working full-time together at Kenan Middle School.
Okay.
I'm sorry, they'll both be point fives at a full-time position at Kenan Middle School.
Roll call please.
Mr. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Voto?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Blackson?
Yes.
Mrs. DeWiler?
Yes.
Okay, next, can I get a motion to adopt a resolution to approve a new Jerome Township TIF? Approve amendments to existing Jerome Township TIFs and approve a compensation agreement with Jerome Township related to the TIFs.
So moved.
One second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Ladies first.
Yes.
First, I want to thank everyone who came out tonight, the emails that we received and all of the stakeholders involved. This has been a very long, complicated consideration and we have definitely needed input from everybody to, to understand the ramifications of what we are deciding here tonight. What, during that process, I learned was that TIFs can be beneficial to certain parties, developers, local government and even in some scenarios to school districts. But sometimes they can also hurt school districts by taking the money from the district. And to get to a place where we fully understand what this agreement entails was a long process and we are not making our decisions lightly. And for those of you who reached out or expressed concerns, what I want you to understand is that every person up here, while we may not agree, are voting on what we believe to be the best interest of this school district. And sometimes those interests don't align with other stakeholders. So I just wanted to thank you for your input, for helping us gain an understanding and for having patience with all of us as we learned through this process.
Yeah, I, I just want to also thank everyone for being here and thank you for your input. I think it is an extremely difficult decision and, but one that we have to take very, very seriously. And we have to look at our North Star and our North, North Star is to do what's best for the kids in our district. Right now, we have close to forty-seven home, forty-seven hundred homes on the books to be built. That's going to be a huge impact on our district. And we cannot do this without additional revenue. And the question is, becomes, where do we get this revenue? And, and so a thirty-year non-school TIF is very good for us and our students because it allows us some of that tax money that comes from the corporate side or the development side and doesn't fall on the backs of our taxpayers. We are going to need this money regardless, whether it's a TIF or whether it's a tax increase on our constituents. We are going to have to raise more money to be able to be the district that we want to be for our kids with all this growth. And so we, we really would love to see a partnership between the county and the township. We don't like the role we're in and we really encourage you to continue to work together, but we have to do what's best for our kids. And that's why we're going to make the decision, why I'm going to vote in support of this. I will tell you from a county perspective, we want to be a great partner with the county. And I think we've been a great partner in the past, we've approved a number of abatements you've requested. At the same time, we've asked for some help from the county and, and we, we haven't got always the help we want. We realize we're in a split district which makes a lot of challenges for us. But when it looks at, when we look at mental health dollars, that's a county responsibility. We, we had to raise that money ourselves to get a mental health counselor in our schools. We want a partnership with the county that supports our kids as well and we encourage you to work with us. We want that kind of relationship. And then the third reason that I'm voting yes, and it's, it's minor, it's, it's very minor. But quite honestly, the approach that the county took to try to get us first through this was a little on the sneaky side. And it didn't build trust. When, when you tried to pass the ten seventy-five with all the school districts without telling us about it, that, that's not how you build a partnership. And, and so we want that partnership with you, believe me, we want you to work it out. But we have to make a decision that's in the best interest of our students, so that's how I, I will vote.
I think they've covered my thoughts.
So I also appreciate, I really appreciate all the emails we've gotten, all the landowners and the people that have skinned the game. I feel like we are being puppeted along. I feel like both parties are telling us what they want us to hear, to come along with their interests. And it frustrates me that we can't set aside the past. I, I am a Madison County resident, so this is all new to me, this Union Jerome drama, I have no past knowledge, I didn't care to know about it. I still really don't, but we're here. So I feel like as I'm reading through all the information from the township, all the information from the county, what I want to say to you is, grow up. Set aside your own agendas, your own offenses. You do not have to perpetuate the drama and dysfunction that has been in the past between the county and the township. You do not have to perpetuate that, you can get along, we are all adults, we are all professionals. We can come to an agreement and it should not have to be on us as a school district to fight for the money for the children in your county and your township. That should be the given, it should be a given that the kids are going to get the money. And you guys can do this, you can get along. We are not tax experts on TIFs and abatements and CEDs and all the stuff. This is not what we were hired to do. And I don't, as Stephen and Sonya have said, they feel that this money is what's in the best interest of kids. I'm not there because I don't think that it comes down to just the money. And if I were to agree to this TIF arrangement, I am convinced that there are long-term implications of which I have no knowledge. And I am not trained to know and understand what this could be long-term. And if I sell out to just getting the money, I feel like it could be potentially compromising greater things that I do not fully understand, I don't know that anyone really fully understands. And I'm not willing, on another note, to agree to something that an organization or a political entity is asking for, that is also going to be asking on a ballot for something that I find incredibly undemocratic, to separate themselves from the county and be their own home rule, I feel is not American and we have checks and balances in our government for a reason. And that's a healthy thing and we need to work with that, that structure that's already been put in place. So it gives me pause, I don't feel like it's as cut and dry as we need the money, I really, really, really want the money. But I'm not willing to, for the reasons that I already stated, vote for it because I feel like there's a lot greater implications. And I just don't want to be party to that at this time. I want, what I really want is for the county and the township to go back, if there's a paragraph in question, we can figure out a paragraph, we can find language that everybody can agree with and we can do better, we can do better. We do not have to be the county and township drama that has always been that people are talking about in Washington DC, people. This is not the way it has to be and I'm, I'm just holding you guys to a higher standard, I think, by saying, no, we're not, I'm not going to vote for this. That's my two cents.
I would also like to see an agreement between the town, the township and the county. I would also like to see an agreement between the township and the county. I, I am concerned about the future ramifications of one entity having control over one thing and another entity having control over another and this headbutting. It gives me a lot of pause that we have, we keep going back to discuss and we keep winding back at the same place that we're not, we can't get there. With all that being said, thirty years is a very long time. And what was proposed to me earlier today was a sixty-day pause to allow the township and the county to try to work something out. And so, for that reason, I would ask for a motion, or I'd like to motion to table this for sixty days to see if there's something that can be done.
I'll second that motion.
I don't, can we actually do that motion when we already have a motion on the floor?
We have to vote on the first one?
Well, don't you table it in the middle of the motion? Does anybody know Robert's rules of order? Anybody, anybody skilled?
Let's, let, can we discuss that?
So, then you'd have, you'd, you would discuss the motion to, yeah, we would discuss the motion to table the motion. Yes.
So, so I guess my, my question to you is, what do you think, I mean, this has been going on for years. Actually, they were here in November, I believe. It was our November board meeting that said they had worked it out. And then it looked like they worked it out in May or March or November times. I mean, they know, they've been trying to work this out all along, what's gonna change. That's what I don't understand.
I don't.
Why, if there was something that was easy to change, they should have already done it, is my, my feel. I mean, they've been dabbling this out for years.
Sure.
And more recently, they know what, where this was coming to us. And, and they easily could have both come here tonight and presented a new option to us. They did not. They came here to present their respective positions, not a new position. So, I guess I'm not sure, I mean, I'm willing to consider that if I know for a fact there's gonna be some real serious talk about that. And here's the thing too, Bill. I mean, thirty-year schooling, no school TIF is very, very good for us. I haven't seen the county say that that's what they, in fact, what they proposed was a ten seventy-five TIF for us.
Well, in fairness, the county did provide us with a thirty-year non-school TIF.
Okay.
They would convert the ten seventy-five to a thirty-year non-school TIF. So, the county, the county did offer a similar, the, the exception being the cap, there's an existing ten seventy-five in the township that they, it would effectively be years eleven through thirty that the county can't offer years one through ten.
That's okay.
Do we have to table it for sixty? Can we tell them to do it in thirty and get back to us sooner?
I, I, I think that's too long. If we're gonna do this, I'd say fourteen days. Figure it out if you.
That's what I think. I think for me, the difference is, I know you say they've, they've been, they've come to us, they've been going back and forth. We also have turnover. So, some of these people don't have the longevity of years or, you know, coming to us and whatever and sitting down and working together. And I think maybe the difference, I'm hoping the difference could be that we are telling them, do it. Do it. Do your jobs and get the school their money and figure this out like professional adults.
Erica, we've been telling them that.
We, I mean, yeah.
Well, but have, yes, lots of people say things, but this is like a official, formal stance. Is, is maybe where I'm coming from. It, it looks a little bit different because we've not been in this position as a school district before. That would be my, that would be my explanation.
When's the next, when's our next board meeting?
This could be different, make it different.
I, I just don't feel that sixty days. I, I think they'll just send their hands for fifty-five and try to work it out. If they can work it out, make it seven or fourteen. Let's get this done.
What, what is it that you want to have done?
Let's, let's do this. Are both entities willing to go back to the table? Because if, if that's a no, then that is our answer.
The township, if I may, I, I know from discussion that would not engage in that at this point in time.
So, we need to vote.
Okay, so the first thing would be to vote on the motion, the motion on the table, or what's currently before us is a motion to table the existing motion. So, the first thing would be to vote on.
No, the motion that's currently before us is to either approve or to vote on the table.
Well, but I made a motion and then Erica seconded a motion to table the motion.
You have to deal with the first.
Do you have to deal with the first?
You do.
You deal with the first before you deal with the second? Okay, Robert's rules of order. Thanks, guys.
You're tabling a motion. If you pass it, the table doesn't mean.
Is irrelevant.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we're gonna, okay, any more discussion on the original motion to approve the TIF, right? Is that what we're talking about?
The fact that they're not willing to go back to the table, it gives me even greater pause to vote through something they're asking for us to vote through when they're not even willing to discuss them further.
I mean, in their defense, they have been, in their defense, this has been going on for, the most recent date for six months.
And I do feel like we've, we've expressed our desire for them to sit the table and work this out on multiple occasions. This is not something that they're hearing for the first time.
But now we're siding with the ones who are refusing to go back to the table like we're asking.
I, I'm not quite sure that's fair, Erica. The reason that this is in front of us now was the county's move to come to the school district after the talks fell down. So, the county brought this to us to begin with. And the township came up with a deal that allows us to recover TIF revenue on an existing TIF in addition to thirty years forward, making us whole. So, had they been negotiating together all along, we'd be in a different scenario. Nobody, none of us want to be voting on this right now. But what we do have is an agreement with the township that makes the school district whole on both a forward TIFs and a prior TIF.
So, why would we not take the counties if they were offering to do the same thing?
Because they couldn't do years one through ten.
Oh. And are we sure that the township can?
They're agreeing to it. It's legally binding.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Volto?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Blackham?
Yes.
Mr. DeWiler?
No.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes. Okay. Next, can I get a motion to consider and approve the eighth grade Gettysburg in Washington DC trip, which would be scheduled for May fourteenth through seventeenth, twenty twenty-four?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please. Uh, discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Blackham?
Yes.
Mr. DeWiler?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Volto?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four calendar updates for four professional development days set for Jonathan Alder teachers and staff for professional growth and meetings?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Blackham?
Yes.
Mr. DeWiler?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Volto?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Next, can I get a motion to approve the athletic passes as presented for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year?
So moved.
I'll second.
I'd like to thank you for your work on this and Mr., Mr. Moyer and Mr. Ruhl.
Really great work.
Yeah, so.
Good improvement.
Appreciate that. Can I get a motion?
Yes.
Yes. Roll call, please.
Mr. DeWiler?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Volto?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Blackham?
Yes.
Our next regular board meeting will be Monday, August fourteenth at five PM here. And could I get a motion to break for executive session to discuss the terms and conditions of employee and discuss the specialized details of security, safety and security?
So moved.
One second.
Roll call.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Volto?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Blackham?
Yes.
Mr. DeWiler?
Yes.
And folks, there will be no action to follow.